To maybe one where I was president of council.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the committee the whole meeting for Monday, July 22nd, 26th, 2021. First items from the Department of Parks and Recreation, ordinance 0035 2021.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first item is for an ordinance to request to amend Chapter 913 of the landscape requirements. You may remember this from June, it was originally on the agenda. Before any legislation was moved forward, we did request to remove and make additional changes through the landscape board. So based off of those changes, you will see an attachment as labor, Chapter 913 redline. The edits on the document has an array of colors to help you identify which were originally brought forward in June, and what are the new edits that were made through the landscape board in July. So the red edits were the original request, and the highlighted yellow are the new edits. You'll see multiple changes, some are formatting to improve and make it streamlined throughout the rest of code. You'll also see some language to help define and improve the intent of the code as well. Happy to answer any questions based off those.
Any questions?
The captioning is not designed for the in-room projector.
It's just view up on the live stream.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I got as far as, it says the accessory buildings, like commercial buildings, are they not requiring them to be screened, or how?
So the Chapter 91306, that's the portion that's completely struck through. That is also in Chapter 11 of the planning and zoning code. So there are some discrepancies through that, so the decision was to just strike through completely, since it's already referenced in a different portion of code.
Okay. I was just concerned that they were.
The requirements still exist, just in another.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Then, this will be first reading, any reason to have it come back to committee? Okay, so, okay with consent agenda?
Thank you, I have a second item, the ordinance 0048. This is an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into contract with Astro Pools Company. Again, you may remember previously, the council did approve the purchase of the Vortex equipment, this was the purchase of the play equipment. The construction of the project did require a bid, it did go to bid, Astro would be the company that we would like to award the bid to. Along with that, we are requesting a supplemental appropriation of $16,000, this is due to increase of labor and construction costs. We are also requesting an emergency waiver to get this project moving.
Okay, Jane.
You say moving, when is constructions to start and when's it to finish?
The expectation is to after the pool season is over, at the end of August.
Would it also be to lock in the construction costs?
That is correct.
Any other questions? Karen?
What was the first amount to be for that particular pad?
The total project is $500,000. The construction cost was estimated to be anywhere between 250 to 275. The bid come in, came in at 290.
Oh, what was, I thought I saw something for 347, but...
That was the engineer's estimate for the construction cost.
Thank you. Is that typical for all of these to be that much?
It is typical, yes. It really depends on the size and the scope of the project, based off of what the costs will be.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Stephanie, kind of piggybacking off of Karen's question, I'm just trying to piece together the various components, for no other reason than just to mentally understand what's going on here. So I know we appropriated half a million dollars for the splash pad, right? I see the 290 and change, there's a supplemental for 16, am I missing something? Is there a materials and labor component to this, and we're only seeing one side of that?
So the Vortex equipment, which was approved previously, was for 225.
Okay, got it. So that's the materials, then what we have now is essentially the labor?
Yes. And the reason why that was done first, that is part of the cooperative purchasing, and there is a 12 to 16 week lead time to get that equipment in.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Director, for presenting this information. I was just a little bit confused with the bid summary format, because there's only one, did we only receive one response to our request for bid?
That is correct. There was only one applicant to put a bid in.
Can you give us any more insight on why that was, or what you're seeing in the field?
It really comes down to, again, what the jobs that can be done within the scope of the cost. So it's not uncommon. Actually, OHM is the engineer who has done the bid packet for us, and there were concern that we potentially wouldn't get any bids. So we were happy to see it was under the estimate of what the engineers had provided.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, I had sent an email to Stefania while I was on vacation, we had an opportunity to enjoy a splash pad when we were out of town, that was, I think, a similar scope and size to what is being implemented here. So I think it's going to be a real asset to young families and to lots of kids to be able to enjoy past the pool season, so thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie, just wanted to follow on with a question with regard to the overall park plan. We've got Friendship Park, we've got Veterans Memorial Park, we have now some probably aged or maybe not consistent with today's expectations, but some drafts and plans. How does this fit in with that long-term plan? Where do we sit with looking at ideas and pass forward for the larger scope projects?
It's a great question, and actually, in the couple of projects that you will see later this evening, the front pool is an expectation to be improved within the next five to 10 years. There was a pool liner that was installed four years ago, and that was a fix in order to, there's about a 10-year warranty on that, so we're going to have to make some changes and improvements to that. The splash pad is just an addition to that expansion of the pool. As you had mentioned, the expectation is no longer a square in the ground. There's a lot of other added play, play features that can be improved to families. If you attend GSP, if you have small children, there's not a lot of options for you, so that front pool can really be changed to improve the multi-generational aspect for the Gehanna Swimming Pool.
In addition to that, I guess my question is around the larger scope redevelopment of our core parks at DFW and Friendship, and where that overall project is.
That comes into also facilities assessment, and the location, and the, just the overarching plan for that entire space and that corridor. That it's part of an overall plan for the infrastructure, because we know with increased play, it's going to be increased traffic. So that entire corridor will have to be improved in order to amend and make those changes moving forward.
If I could interject, also, I would say that the Gehanna Swim Pool, even, there have been several different, I can't speak, it's Monday, alliterations, there we go, of what that potential Southwest floodplain could be developed as. And the Gehanna Swim Pool, I believe, was always a firm staying in there. So the ability to add the splash pad to enhance the attractiveness of the Gehanna Swim Pool long-term, I think this fits right in there and adds to, regardless of how that eventually ends up being developed with regard to fields or what have you, that will still be the major component there, so that just further, it makes that area attractive.
Any other questions? All right. Is everyone okay with waiver and emergency?
Yes.
Okay, so, why don't we put it on the regular agenda for Monday, please? 0048 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, items, item, not items, item from the Department of Public Service Engineering.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, it is only item tonight, it's usually items. So the only item we have for you is requesting legislation to enter into contract with AECOM for the design of the Claycraft Road wireline replacement, as well as a supplemental appropriation. So the project will replace the existing Claycraft Road wireline from Morrison Road to Taylor Station Road, in addition to addressing other related improvements such as valves and hydrants. The design of this wireline replacement will be coordinated with the improvements to the intersection of Taylor Station Road and Claycraft Road. So the existing wireline was installed in 1968. It has a very extensive and long history of breaks dating back many years, and most recently, over the past five years, it has experienced four major breaks, causing disruptions to businesses and residents along Claycraft Road. Each break did require that the wireline be temporarily shut down, which caused businesses to suspend operations for many hours. Age-related corrosion and stresses from the old railroad crossing appear to be the primary causes of these breaks. As one of the two supply lines to Gehanna's water tower that feeds the industrial zone and hundreds of residential homes, the replacement of this line is critical in providing safe and reliable water service. We are also requesting supplemental appropriation from the unencumbered Water Capital Fund in the amount of $55,000 to conduct additional surveying and engineering work related to this project. Following a recent update to our water distribution model, it was discovered that this main creates excess pressure losses from the booster station, which is causing reduced water supply and increased pumping as well. These losses are believed to be a result of the wireline's age, condition, and of course, the numerous repairs over the past few years. While this project was originally focused solely on the area of most frequent breaks, we now need to complete a full replacement of this line, and the change will require additional surveying and engineering work. So in summary, we are respectfully requesting council to authorize an ordinance to enter into contract with AECOM and a supplemental appropriation.
Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry to see Mike.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Grant, just, or Joanne, perhaps, just confirming, Capital Water Utility Fund, that's one of the proprietary funds?
Correct.
Okay, perfect, yeah. No objection from me, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, we can have this, anybody need this to come back to committee?
No.
Consent agenda, okay?
Sure.
So we'll have on for first reading on next meeting, no need to come back, and then on to consent agenda for the following meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other items? We're at the end of the agenda, so we will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, Mike.
And Crystal, if you'll just let me know when you're ready to go?
Ready.
Ready? Okay, great. Then, let's kick off Finance Committee for Monday, July 26, 2021. We just have one item on the agenda this evening, it is an update from the Director of Finance, presentation of the capital needs assessment. So with that, Ms. Burry, you have the floor?
Good evening. You should have each received an electronic copy of the 2022 capital needs assessment. So as a reminder, this is not a request for funding, it's an inventory of capital needs over the next five years and beyond to consider for appropriations that are upcoming and in the future. So we have projects that were completed, and no longer considered relevant, have been removed. Projects that were not fully funded or only partially funded have been updated, and then we have some new projects that were added for 2022, which is on page three of the introduction. There are some important items to note. You will not see any facility-related projects within the capital needs assessment. This is related to the facility assessment that's been ongoing, because of changes in staff that have been recurring over the past couple of years. Phase one, which was kind of the assessment of what we currently have, needed to be revisited. Phase two, which was taking that information and determining what direction to go in, kind of stalled in 2019. It was picked back up in 2020, and that'll be finalized within 2021, and we'll have a report out to council at an upcoming committee meeting. Phase three will result in an actual facility plan. This will be a standalone plan from the capital needs assessment, and both will have to be considered from year to year. The one thing to note is that the facility project or plan itself will be considered a priority one. The age, footprint, layout, mechanics of all the facilities have various deficiencies and risks associated with them. And on page three of the introduction, it gives more of a summary of what's been occurring with the facilities assessment, and then in the conclusion, it kind of lists out some examples of those deficiencies and risks that we've identified already. The other important item to note is Creekside. So there is a sheet in there, but it's a very preliminary number. So it has the garage, but they could incorporate some other renovations or improvements that are needed. And John Moorhead is going to come up and briefly describe what the plan is to analyze the results from the previous engineering study, and what our path forward is going to be, to get a better estimate of what those renovations and improvements are, and what the associated costs may be.
Good evening. As Joanne mentioned, there is a new item in the budget requests before you for Creekside Garage, and in there, you see preliminary numbers as a placeholder for future years of improvements, as we explore the repair and renovation efforts that are needed to bring that garage into FEMA compliance for floodproofing. The report that was presented late 2020 was an initial assessment by DLZ Engineering to identify whether or not that garage did comply with FEMA requirements for flood protection. We have since that time been working with FEMA to establish a corrective action plan to take those findings and move them forward into action, that will actually bring that garage into the level of protection required by the federal government. So today, there is a posting on our website for a request for proposals to seek a consulting team to help with that effort. We plan to move forward with that, once we establish a team, I believe it's posted for around 30 days, while we seek qualified individuals to help us with that. As we move forward, I would expect further updates from us, and part of that consulting effort will be the prescription for improvements, which while we have to coordinate those with FEMA and gain their approval as we move forward, we're hoping that the contract we're seeking now will be the path to actual improvements in the years to come. It's our goal that those improvements are spaced out over time and prioritized in an order that helps maximize the safety and security of that facility as we start the effort, but it could take a number of years, depending on what is at stake there, and availability of funding to make those changes.
I'll kind of wrap up. So really, this is homework for you all. Please go back, look over the CNA. If you could pass questions and recommendations you may have for funding onto the Finance Chair, I'll work with the mayor to make sure that's disseminated to senior staff appropriately. And as far as the administrations, when we prepare the appropriations, as always, we look to capital maintenance first, want to take care of what we have, followed by priority one, those things that are considered a risk to public health or safety, then those that meet strategic goals of the city, and then we consider all others. So as you're sending your recommendations in, that's kind of how we categorize when we're looking at bringing the appropriation request forward.
Thank you, Joanne. So effectively, this kind of kicks off the budget discussion for 2022. Would you mind just kind of, I guess, outlining the various dates, even if they're just ballparks, when we would wrap this up, when we would anticipate the budget book, and so forth and so on?
Yeah, so I have a preliminary calendar, which I did not bring with me, but I think I remember some of the dates. So August 3 will be the kickoff for the operational budgets. So this is what departments are requesting for their operations, no capital related, and no salaries and benefits at that point. Miranda, the HR Director, will work with the departments, as well as IT, on what their staffing and technology needs will be moving into 2022. I work on the salary and benefits projections, and then we kind of pull that together, look at what we have available, and then we kind of categorize the capital and decide what would be the most prudent to bring forward to you as a request. So August 3 is kickoff. We usually go through the September timeframe, kind of pulling all that together and creating the budget book, delivery planned sometime in October, and then you'll have all of October, November, passage would be hopefully the last formal council meeting in December, and they take effect January 1. And I could send out the preliminary calendar to everybody this evening, so you kind of have a better idea of what those key dates are.
Sure, that'd be great. As it relates to the CNA, what's the deliverable from council, council action, and then when does the administration require that?
So no action is really required on the capital needs assessment, it just kind of gives you all an opportunity to look at what's on the horizon, and then if you have questions on certain projects, or if you have recommendations, if there's something that you really would like us to consider to bring forward, to bring that to us. Again, the operations part kind of happens in August through beginning of September, so we would need to have those to answer those questions and consider those things for funding by the end of September.
And I thought I heard earlier in your presentation, the format for that back and forth with the administration is very similar to how we carried forward the budget last year, aggregating questions with me, then kind of having a single point of contact, and you having the list ahead of time for committee, is that the request again this year?
Yes, I think that worked very well. It helped with having a lot of duplicate questions coming in, helped us better prepare ourselves, as well as I think council preparing to see what was going to be brought forward. So I think that process worked very well, so we would definitely like to continue that, starting with this and then moving into the budget document.
I'm happy to facilitate, but I'll defer to my colleagues if that's an acceptable format, or...
Yeah, works very well.
Any objections to that? Okay. Anything from council regarding the process, what we've seen, I understand everybody got this probably about an hour, hour and a half ago, but just anything for the administration at this moment?
Mr. Schenzer.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, if we could just thank you in advance to Mr. Moorhead and Mr. Crawford, but if we could please maybe have another discussion on the Creekside Garage, perhaps at an upcoming committee meeting, since it is such a significant project, hopefully we can have more discussion on that.
Sure. I believe as Mr. Moorhead said, we'll be issuing the RFP, so once, that should probably be about 30 days, until we'd start to receive some responses in from that point. So I think probably in about 30 to 45 days, we'll be in a better position to give some further updates on that.
Okay. Anything else from council? Anything else from the administration? All right, thus concludes Finance at 7:23.
Crystal, let me know when you're ready.
municipal council.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leesberg, seconded by Mr. Brenner. Any discussion? Roll call.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Brenner?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Leesberg?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Thank you. We're back in session. At this time, we would ask for a motion to... Yes, sir.
We want to amend the roll calls and reflect that Mr. Schnitzer's here.
Oh, yes. And Mr. Schnitzer has arrived to this special meeting.
I noted the time he came in. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we would ask for a motion to go into executive session under Council Rules of Procedure 5.40A to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official with the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual. Unless the public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leesberg, seconded by Mr. Schnitzer. Any discussion? Roll call.
Leesberg?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Brenner?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Lyric?
Motion carries. Thank you. Or yes. If council would meet in the library, and I don't know that there will be any action after this. We do have an agenda item in case there is, but we will come back.